Good evening. I would like to welcome everybody to the Thursday, November 16th, monthly board meeting. There are some extra seats over here to the side if you would like them. I know a few people are still standing. With that, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Columbia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to announce that the board met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss the personnel report, special education and student issues, and real estate settlement appeals.
Before we get to tonight's formal agenda, we do have two recognitions that are important for us to take care of. First, I'd like to welcome Coach Jeff Kavanaugh to the podium to recognize our PIAA AAA Girls' State Golf Champion.
It's my honor and privilege to be here tonight to celebrate and recognize Rihanna Gunaratna for her incredible accomplishments this season for the PW golf team. Before I speak a little about her, I'd like to take the time to thank the board for inviting us tonight, Mrs. Lester for her help in setting this up, Assistant Coach Bill Price for his help this season, Dr. Christian, Dr. Bakani, Mr. Brez, Jesse Mancuso, and the admin team at PW for their support of athletics and the PW golf team. I would also like to thanks Rihanna's parents as well as the parents from the golf team for their support and the players for their time and commitment this season. We're here to celebrate Rihanna. Rihanna's a junior at PW and competed on our coed varsity golf team. She's a member of the varsity team all three years in her attendance at PW. She's participated in 42-team matches so far for her career and scored in the top five every single match, 42 out of 42. Rihanna has qualified for the suburban golf tournament every year as a member of the golf team, qualified for the District One Girls Tournament all three years, and qualified for the PIAA State Tournament all three years. This year specifically, Rihanna had a list of accomplishments. She finished first among the female golfers in the regular season out of the 32 suburban one female golfers. She also had the sixth-best handicap out of all male and female golfers in all of suburban one, where there were 280-plus varsity golfers. If you ask Rihanna, she would say she had an up-and-down regular season. For anyone else, they would be thrilled with the scores she was shooting. But Rihanna is determined and has the drive to always push herself to do a little bit better. Once the individual tournament started, Rihanna was locked in and laser-focused on her goals. She went on to win the suburban one golf tournament, shooting an incredible three-under-par 68 at Five Ponds Golf Course. This advanced her to districts. In districts, on day one, she carted an even par 71 at Ravensclaw and followed it up with a five-over-par round of 77 at Turtle Creek to finish third at District One. This qualified Rihanna to move on to states as the top-nine girls from District One get to move on. While at states, in the highest of pressures, Rihanna played her best round ever on day one, shooting a five-under-par 67, putting her in the lead after day one. On day two, everyone was chasing her. Rihanna played some amazing golf in an extremely high-pressure situation. She was two under par for the day after 13 holes. After a mishap on hole 14, where she triple-bogied, you saw her walk off the green, take a moment, and try to recollect herself. She walked to the 15th tee and hit her tee shot right down the middle on 15. I thought to myself, "All right, she has this." She still had a three-stroke lead with four holes to play, but she didn't let her mishap get to her. As I was walking by her ball, it looked like it had nestled down in the fairway on 15. As I got closer, I realized she was in every golfer's nightmare, her ball resting in a huge divot in the middle of the fairway. I couldn't believe how unlucky she got and didn't know where she was mentally after the last hole. Rihanna calmly walked up to her ball, thought through the shot, and hit an amazing shot onto the right side of the green. I told her after the round that this was her best shot of the tournament. I would have been impressed had she hit this shot during a practice round, but she did it in the middle of a state championship just coming off of a tough hole. I told her it was one of the best shots I've ever seen, and she said, "Yeah, I guess that was a pretty good shot." Rihanna went on to par the last four holes and stretched her lead to five strokes. Her physical game was always so good, but this moment showed huge growth in her mental game, and I know this will make her that much stronger moving forward. She shot a final round 73, putting her two-day total at four under par. She was the only female at states to go under par after the two days. We stood here last year at the board meeting and stated we knew top-10 was going to happen this year, as she had placed 14th her freshman year and tied for 12th her sophomore year. Rihanna said, "Top-10 isn't good enough. I want to win," and that she did. Rihanna's your 2023 PIAA Girls 3A State Champion. She became only the second golfer in PW history to win a state championship, with the last one being in 1970 by Keith Griffin. She's also the first female to win a state championship in golf at PW. The moment was so special, watching her come off the last green, knowing she had won, and embracing her family is something I'll never forget as a coach. Rihanna is verbally committed to attend the University of Delaware, while she will continue her academic and golf career.
That's really incredible.
But before she does, she's already said that she has a goal of winning all three tournaments
I'm sure there's a few of us up here that would love to take lessons from you very soon.
next year.
Tonight, we have another recognition.
For now, let's just enjoy and celebrate that state championship.
We are going to bid farewell to two individuals who have selflessly dedicated so much of themselves
Congratulations, Rihanna. You are both a phenomenal student and athlete that represent the district so well. We're all proud of you.
to the betterment of our schools and community, and yet, it is apparent that only one of
Your state champ, Rihanna Gunaratna.
those individuals is present this evening. Sue Moore has given me permission to share that she is missing her second-ever monthly meeting in over 22 years due to an emergency surgery that, as she said, she clearly could not reschedule. While we all wish her a speedy recovery, but I just want to say that to only miss two monthly meetings in 22 years, this statistic alone demonstrates the incredible impact Sue has had on our educational community and the legacy she will leave behind. We certainly look forward to celebrating and thanking her for her years of service at a future board meeting when she's feeling a little bit better. With that being said, we are very grateful to have Kathy Peduzzi here this evening. Kathy, you've spent the last eight years as a school board member, but you've actually spent, I believe, the last 12 years serving our community, first as a member of the White Marsh Township Supervisors, before moving into your school board role. During your time on the board, your unwavering passion, dedication, and emotional investment has been evident. You truly approach your responsibilities with a genuine desire to make a positive impact on the lives of our students and the greater community. So as we have joked, occasionally, your passion may raise a few eyebrows, but I truly believe it speaks volumes to your deep commitment and personal investment in the well-being of our district. It takes a special kind of dedication, not to just invest your time and effort, but also emotion into the important work that we do as school board members. And I just want to say I sincerely thank you for always speaking truthfully, asking hard questions, being blunt when needed, and truly using your voice and your passion to make a difference. So thank you for all you've done for the students and students.
Kathy, on behalf of the Board of School Directors and the administration, we have some parting gifts for you. Thank you for your unparalleled dedication to the faculty, staff, and most importantly, the students of Colonial School District. We appreciate your selflessness and your dedication.
That was really sweet. Thank you very much for saying those words, Beth and Dr. Christian. Yes, I've been in public service for 12 years. I got into it as a way to give back to the community. I was lucky to not have to work outside the home, and so I wanted to use my time to do something worthwhile. And I really enjoyed serving on the Township Board of Supervisors for the most part, but then when my children started coming into the public school, I really took an interest, obviously, into the way that we educate our children, how we pay for the education for our children, and the policies that go into how we execute that. So I have really enjoyed getting to know the nitty-gritty of how a school district runs. I did not sign up for being a school board member during COVID. That is not something any of us signed up for, even living through it. So those were some of the most challenging times, but I am grateful that I had the opportunity to, as Beth said, you know, express my passions and try to make... I wasn't making decisions. It's always a board of nine, but, you know, speaking my mind and trying to learn as much as I could to encourage those to make, you know, decisions based on as much information as we could possibly know. So with that being said, I will very much miss it. I didn't want to be off the board. I just really hate the politics of all of this, so running for the school board is not always my favorite thing, but I will still be paying attention. I will still be coming to some meetings to support you guys and, you know, make sure that everybody's smiling and getting along the way everybody has been the last couple of years, which has been such a wonderful thing. So that's what I'm going to miss, the camaraderie, working with the administration who kicks booty. And, you know, I don't get to see a lot of the teachers and the students, of course, but they kick butt, too. So thank you very much. I know there's a lot of people here with things that they are passionate about, and I respect everybody who has something to say, as well as appreciative of those who have respected the things that I've had to say over the years. So thank you very much.
Thank you to the community for attending tonight's meeting. We know that many of you are here to discuss your concerns about a social media post made earlier this week by Dr. Jamina Clay. In case you did not receive our email from earlier today, please know that Dr. Clay submitted her resignation letter this morning, stating that she did not wish to distract from the board's work. The board does have business to take care of tonight, but we also want to hear from you. We respectfully request that you hold public comments that are unrelated to tonight's agenda until the second public comment period. When you comment, please state your name and residence before commenting so that we can record it in the minutes. While Dr. Clay has indicated her resignation is effective immediately, the board will need to vote to officially accept it in December. School board meeting agendas may not be altered to include new voting items on the day of a public meeting. Once the resignation is officially accepted, we will publish information about the process involved in appointing a new board member. Before we move on with the meeting, I would like to make a statement on behalf of the board. We acknowledge that members of our community are hurting as a result of Dr. Clay's comments. This is not acceptable in our school district, where we pride ourselves on creating a culture of belonging. Earlier this week, we held a committee meeting in which we discussed this very topic as part of a report about a survey that was done to assess school climate in our middle and high schools. During the meeting, a quote from Maya Angelou was shared. Many of you may already know it. That quote is, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." We want all of you here tonight to leave feeling respected, honored, and as though you have been heard. We know we will have work to do in the days and weeks ahead to heal a rift that has opened up. This work will not be easy. It will not be without discomfort, but we hope it can be done with kindness and empathy and in the spirit of moving our school community forward in a positive way. This is a motion to approve minutes as presented in items 4B through 4G. May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for October 2023. May I have a second? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the October 2023 Treasurer's Report. May I have a second? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Now, we will move on to public comment on items that are listed on tonight's agenda. Do we have any public comment on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Trunow. Motion is requested for the approval of superintendent's report, items 8A, 8B, 8C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state-mandated requirements.
May I have a second? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our student representatives' report.
Good evening, Dr. Christian, school board members, and community. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide the monthly school student report for November. Starting off with Concha Hawkins Elementary, CE's PTO meeting was held on November 8th. During this meeting, Mrs. Marx reviewed the FID day plans, upcoming conferences, and the parent/guardian's work on upcoming fundraisers. CE hosted a very special Veterans Day breakfast on November 10th for our families who are or have served our country. Our third graders performed a selection of patriotic songs for our guests. CE will celebrate American Education Week on November 13th through the 17th and honor Plymouth White Marsh High School student and former CE student Eva Rogiro for her efforts raising funds for the Foundation for Fighting Blindness as our friend of education. CE students are packing piggies full of loose change to make a donation over this week. We are looking forward to having families and to see instruction in action. CE is very excited to be bringing back the Concha Hawkins Senior Luncheon on Thursday, November 16th. Our second graders will perform a selection of songs from their concert, and our third graders will serve our guests their Thanksgiving meal. Many thanks to the CE helping hands who made party favors for the guests.
For White Marsh Elementary, White Marsh Elementary celebrated Veterans Day by honoring those who served their country with an event on Friday, November 10th. We welcomed over 40 veterans to the building for an assembly where they were recognized and thanked for their service. After the assembly, guests visited classrooms to meet students and discuss their stories of serving in the various branches of the military. They were then treated to lunch courtesy of Mission Barbecue. It was truly a special day for everyone involved. White Marsh once again continues to plan No Place for Hate activities that correlate with our Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging initiatives under the Anti-Defamation League. We are currently working on three special-school-wide projects that will allow us to be named a No Place for Hate school for a third consecutive year.
Ridge Park Elementary. Their local fire department and Tim McDonald joined us for our monthly fire drill during Fire Prevention Month. Students and staff did an incredible job with both drills. Along with our local volunteer firefighters, retired Ridge Park teacher Donna Sturm hosted a fire safety assembly. Students were able to watch staff members get in and out of firefighter gear, as well as learn about being safe at home. Students, staff, and caregivers enjoyed fall festivities on October 28th, including classroom parties and the Fall Parade. Many thanks to Ms. Cindio for providing fun music for us. A huge thank you to the RPP T.O. homeroom parents and all of our families for making our fall parties a success. During the week of October 31st, we kicked off No Place for Hate. A staff team created morning meeting slides for everyone. All students and staff signed the No Place for Hate pledge, which resulted in an amazing bulletin board in the lobby.
On October 31st in Plymouth Elementary, the school held its Fall Parade. On October 11th, they held their Fall Book Fair/Family Night. On November 10th, they held their second-grade concert, and on November 15th, their specialist teachers had a family night as well. On November 13th, author Kevin McCloskey visited the school, and on November 16th, American Education Week Family Visitation was held. On November 10th, the second-grade students are performing in their school concert, "Thankful for the USA." Mrs. Tracy O'Shea, our music teacher, will be leading the second graders as they sing songs about America. PE is invited to welcome... is excited to welcome all of our families to our first annual specialist night, which already happened yesterday. Families were excited to come... or families were invited to come to school and participate in activities led by each of our school specialists. Our art, music, physical education, technology, library, and health and wellness teachers planned fun and engaging activities for families to do during the rotation through each class.
Next school is Colonial Elementary. On November 10th, the Climate Committee planned for the No Place for Hate school-wide assembly. The focus continued to be on creating a sense of community and belonging through CES. At CES, the school counselors are currently teaching lessons from the Too Good for Drugs program in every fourth and fifth-grade classroom. The lessons introduce and develop skills for making healthy choices, building positive friendships, developing self-efficiency, communicating effectively, and resisting peer pressure and influence. The school improvement team is busy analyzing data and determining goals for this school year. They are working together to create an action plan to help strengthen the areas that are weak and also narrow down the focus to where it needs to be to make improvements. This will allow CES to have data-driven goals. Thanks to the generosity of many families, the PTO will continue to provide a pretzel to every student in the building on the first Friday of every month. Their Fall Parade, led by Principal Rock and Assistant Principal Tober, was a huge success. The students dressed in their favorite costumes and paraded around the track at Plymouth White Marsh High School. Many families were in attendance. Following the parade, the students had a party in their classrooms with many snacks and activities. Each month, Trailblazer Rewards will be given out to three students per cluster for outstanding performance in the following areas, demonstrating respect, responsibility, safety, and good choices. Next school is Colonial Middle School. CMS had one of the most dominant fall seasons in CMS history. The seventh-grade volley team are MCAA champions. The girls' cross-country team, the seventh-grade field hockey team, and the seventh-grade girl soccer team are all undefeated. We are so proud of our teams and coaches. Parent-teacher conferences occurred on November 6th and November 9th. On Friday, October 27th, CMS band and color guard students performed with PW marching Colonials at the home football game. On October 16th through the 19th, seventh grade had a field trip to Camp America. The days were packed with team challenge activities. Students worked within their homerooms to accomplish various tasks. Excellent communication, positivity, encouragement, and teamwork were a must in order to be successful. Teachers are already organizing another Camp America team-building trip for next year's seventh-grade students. Ms. Horowitz's creative arts students spent time in Bicentia Park this week, inspired by earth artist Andy Goldsworthy and traditional sand medallists. Using only what was gathered from the ground, they created designs and patterns. They learned the importance of photographing and further explored radical design with iPad apps. The CMS musical is underway, Camp Rock. CMS is approaching the end of trimester one and gearing up for additional trimester and benchmark assessments. Teachers continue their efforts to make data-driven decisions as we work intentionally to help all students grow.
Plymouth White Marsh was proud to conduct new members into our different honor societies. PW was also recognized for the PIAA Sportsmanship Award for exemplifying sportsmanship last school year. We had a successful run of our Fall Musical, Puffs, and many enjoy the show. Tomorrow, November 17th, begins our winter sports season, and on that note, Plymouth White Marsh Ice Hockey is proud to announce that they are honoring their senior players and manager on Monday, November 20th, at 7:30 PM. Tickets are on sale during all school lunches tomorrow and are available via the PW Ice Hockey Instagram. This is the conclusion of our November 16th, 2023 student report. Thank you all for your time and have a nice evening.
Moving on to new business, Rick?
This is a motion to accept and approve the audit report for the 2022-2023 fiscal year as presented and approv... sorry, as presented and approval to submit the PDE 2057 Annual Financial Report to PDE. The district's local auditor, BBD LLC, has completed the audit of the 2022-23 fiscal year, acceptance and approval of the audit results, and the district financials will authorize the final audit report to be published and the financial reports to be filed with the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the assessment appeals listed by parcel number below.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
This is a motion to approve Zero Eye's artificial intelligence to be installed in every school with a three-year contract for $73,800 per year. The district has been successfully piloting this intelligence in the high school for the last year.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments?
This is part of our comprehensive... I'll let Mr. Lally comment as well, but this is part of our comprehensive safety plan, and this intelligence will recognize if an individual is carrying a weapon in school. It's... while it's very difficult to have these conversations and we never want to have to use it, the realities of, you know, because of the history of unfortunate incidents that have taken place in schools, it is emerging technology that we have found to be very effective. Fortunately, we have not had to use it, but it's a protection for our students and our staff. Joe and... Joe Alley and Tim McDonald are head of security, have worked with this company that is based locally. We were the first district in Montgomery County to have the technology, and many districts are following suit, and we think it's time to expand it into the rest of our schools. authorize the final audit report to be published and the financial reports to be filed with the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the attached resolution to opt out of the Act One timeline by certifying the district will not raise the real estate tax in excess of the 2024-2025 Act One index of 5.3%. This motion also certifies that the school district will be unable to use the Act One exceptions included in the law.
May I have a second? Kathy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the assessment appeals listed by parcel number below.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
This is a motion to approve Zero Eye's artificial intelligence to be installed in every school with a three-year contract for $73,800 per year. The district has been successfully piloting this intelligence in the high school for the last year.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments?
This is part of our comprehensive, I'll let Mr. Lally comment as well, but this is part of our comprehensive safety plan. And this intelligence will recognize if an individual is carrying a weapon in school. It's, while it's very difficult to have these conversations and we never want to have to use it, the realities of, because of the history of unfortunate incidents that have taken place in schools, it is emerging technology that we have found to be very effective. Fortunately, we have not had to use it, but it's a protection for our students and our staff. Joe and, Joe Alley and Tim McDonald are head of security, have worked with this company that is based locally. We were the first district in Montgomery County to have the technology, and many districts are following suit, and we think it's time to expand it into the rest of our schools.
All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
This is a motion to approve the proposed budget for the PWHS Colonial Players 2023 Fall Production of Puffs and authorize the payment specified compensation as submitted in the budget.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? All in, questions or comments?
The show was wonderful.
Great, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
This is a motion to approve Board Policy Number 328, Compensation Plan, Salary Schedules on a Second Read Basis as Presented.
May I have a second, please? Kathy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve the policies outlined below on a first-read basis. Policy 146, Student Services, and Policy 236, Student Assistance.
May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? And just for the public's knowledge, these are discussed at our different committee meetings, so they've already been discussed and reviewed by the board. All in favor? Thank you. Sharon?
This is a motion to approve the conference request for Plymouth White Marsh High School College Counselor Beth Lynch to attend the Rowan University Counselor Day in Glassboro, New Jersey on November 15th, 2023. The request was reviewed and recommended for approval at the November 13th curriculum meeting this past Monday.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve a settlement and release agreement. Due to student confidentiality, this agreement was discussed in exec session earlier.
May I have a second? Kathy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Sharon?
And this is a motion to approve the stipulation agreement for student number 19900 as presented and reviewed in executive session earlier.
May I have a second? Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Solicitors' report.
No report from the solicitor tonight.
Thank you. Committee reports. Chris, you have a report?
No report.
Thank you. Curriculum, Sharon?
Just a brief report that on the curriculum meeting this past Monday, both the middle school and high school administrators shared their PA Future Ready Index data, which is looking quite positive, during our annual achievement and growth check, as well as their school improvement plans for this year. And our high school also proposed two new courses of study, AP World History and a virtual programming course. And then we also discussed the conference that I just named for you.
Thank you. I believe there is no facilities report this evening. Rick, finance?
The finance committee met on November 2nd. The committee reviewed the audit report, which was released this past week, which was a clean audit. The 2023-2024 budget update, the PW Fall Production Budget, and opting out of the Act One Index, all items of which were voted on tonight.
Thank you. There's also no HR report. Chris?
Yeah, there's no report.
Thank you. Sharon, intermediate unit?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Legislative, Rick?
No report.
Thank you. Any municipal or community liaison reports this evening? Thank you. And the foundation, Gail?
No report.
Okay. For your information, attached to tonight's agenda is the school activity accounts, the athletic accounts, building reports, curriculum, instruction, and assessment report, as well as the technology report. And now, at this time, we will move on to public comment. As a reminder, if for our minutes, if you could please state your name and place of residence, we would greatly appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you to the school board, Dr. Christian, and to the community that's shown up tonight in support.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, could you just state your name?
My name is Mark Wolfheimer, resident of Lafayette Hill. You need my address? Okay. I'm also the president of Congregation Oremi. I do recognize that these are difficult times, that we find ourselves discussing this topic of hate speech tonight. Hopefully, we can end this evening on a positive note by agreeing to educate the students and the community about Judaism and the history of these wonderful people. Here are a few important facts in response to the untrue posts made by an individual on the school board. False claim, the IDF for terrorists, they're attacking hospitals. The truth, the IDF are not terrorists, they are Israel Defense Forces. It's Hamas which is launching attacks from hospitals and schools and has been keeping hostages there. False claim, Israel is committing genocide in Gaza. Truth, over the past two decades, the population of Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank has increased substantially. This is hardly genocide. False claim, Israel is not concerned for the lives of civilians. The truth, Israel's first and most moral duty and loyalty is to the innocent Israeli civilians, babies, women, and men captured from their homes on October 7th, 2023. Israel is doing everything in its power to return them home. It is Hamas who is fighting from behind innocent civilians, while Israel is still trying to protect as many innocent lives as possible. It must forge forward to save hostages and protect the Israel population from the terrorist army known as Hamas. Had Israel not cared about civilians, this war would have been over on October 8th. How will this board assure us that there will not be another person appointed to the co-director of the Colonial Anti-Racism and Social Equality Alliance, who has anti-Semitic views, or at the very least is uninformed and posting factless allegations in her social media? That cannot happen again. How will this board keep our children safe from the spread of antisemitism? Our children and the parents in our community should not be afraid to attend and send their children to the Colonial School District. I've been a member of this community for over thirty years, and today I stand in front of you wondering what will happen to my family, my home, because I am standing up to antisemitism in my community. We need to make sure that the equality, that the equity and inclusion program includes the Jewish community. We need to make sure that when faculty onboard members make, who make hateful comments on social media against other races and religions, that swift action is taken to eliminate and show a zero tolerance for such behavior. Congregation Oremi is here to help. We'd like to offer our support to work with your equity and inclusion representatives to create a program that will help educate our children. We'd like to be your resource when you need help on how to deal with a situation involving antisemitism or hate speech. I thank you for your time, and I hope that we can work together to create Kuno Lam, Healing of the World.
Andrew Goretzky, White Marsh Township. My name is Andrew Goretzky, and I am a father of a student at Colonial Middle School. My professional background spans twenty-three years in higher education, where I've witnessed the evolving nature of antisemitism on campuses. I am now in advocacy work with an anti-hate organization, but tonight I am here as a parent and an educator. I hold a doctorate in higher education administration with a research focus on student engagement and mobile technology. I am acutely aware of the challenges posed by disinformation and misinformation online. As an educator and a parent, I believe it is vital that we, especially those in positions of authority, commit to promoting and relying on accurate and valid information. I am both pro-Israeli and pro-Palestinian. Yes, it is possible to be both. In a recent op-ed, I wrote, "I want peace, dignity, and prosperity for Israelis and Palestinians, and I want the Hamas terrorist threat to be eliminated. I want safety and equity for people of all identity groups, whether it is race, religion, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, or any identity, and I want all extremism to be eradicated." Yesterday, I learned that a member of this board referred to the Israeli Defense Forces as a terrorist organization amongst other inaccuracies, and I'm being polite when I call them inaccuracies. I find this characterization not only deeply offensive, but also dangerously inaccurate, misleading, and anti-Semitic. It is essential to clarify such misconceptions and speak against disinformation, which can fuel prejudice and division within our community. I am a Jewish man who has never been to Israel, yet I have a deep connection to her. I've never been there because my family could not afford to bring me there, and birthright did not exist when I was in college. I'm supposed to bring my middle schooler there this summer for his bar mitzvah, and I have such pride in being able to do for him what my family wished they could have done for me. We made our decisions about our trip on October 6th, and we're going to book on October 9th. That's on hold following the horrific events of the 7th. My grandfather taught me that we needed to support Israel because it was the only country on earth where we could guarantee that we would not be persecuted by our government for being Jewish, similar to what we saw with slavery and Jim Crow laws that persecuted and dehumanized the Black and African-American community here in the U.S. This is one of the reasons that the Jewish community was a significant partner, and it still is, with the Civil Rights Movement, because many of us knew that to fight one form of hate and bigotry, we have to fight all forms of hate and bigotry. Why are American Jews so upset? Nine million people lived in, live in Israel, twelve hundred murdered, thousands injured, two hundred to two hundred and fifty kidnapped. On 9/11, 235 million people lived in the U.S., 3,000 were killed. If the ratios were the same on 9/11, 45,000 people would have been killed, 250 to 300,000 people would have been injured, thousands kidnapped. And although we were worried about more terrorist attacks, we were not worried about rockets being shot at us from Canada and Mexico. And in less than 24 hours, there were not protests around the world calling for the destruction of the United States as there has been about Israel. Although, let me correct that, there were protests in Gaza and Iran cheering the destruction of the World Trade Center. The Jewish population worldwide stands at around 15 million people, nearly half of whom reside in Israel. When we hear "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free," we hear a threat to half of the people who share our identity, and this is less than 100 years after the Holocaust. That is generational trauma. Please imagine for a moment how you would feel, how you would react, if half of your identity group were threatened. In conclusion, as a community, we must strive for informed discourse, particularly on matters as sensitive as the Israeli-Hamas conflict. I personally find the remarks that the IDF is a terrorist organization to be offensive, and as an educator, I find these words to be negligent. It is our responsibility to challenge disinformation and promote understanding, empathy, and peace. Despite my anger last night when I heard about this social media post, I offer to sit down in dialogue because at my core, I am an educator, and I have to believe, including myself, that all of us can learn and must continue to learn. What is happening over there is no excuse for antisemitism or Islamophobia here in the United States or anywhere around the world. Thank you for your attention and for the opportunity to share my perspective on this
It's gonna be a tough act to follow. Good evening, my name is Spencer Yablon. I've lived in White Marsh Township for over forty years, nearly my entire life. My sister and I went through Colonial School District thirty-plus years ago. My two children are students in the district now. I am also a member of Congregation Oremi and a proud Jewish American. My grandfather fought in World War II to liberate the concentration camps, and it pains me to say that I'm relieved he's no longer alive right now because it would kill him to witness the recent terrorist atrocities perpetrated in Israel, as well as the growing antisemitism here in America. When my wife was pregnant with our daughter over sixteen years ago, we had to decide where we wanted to plant our roots. Many of our friends were settling on the main line for the highly-ranked school districts. Some others chose to live here, but send their children to private schools. For us, we placed a high value on the diversity of this area. We wanted our children to grow up well-rounded, to be exposed to families of different backgrounds, and learn to accept people for who they are. So we settled here because Plymouth, White Marsh, and Conshohocken together form a beautiful little melting pot that's very representative of our country. It offered, and still offers, everything that we want in our community. Today, our children are benefiting from the diversity of this district, just as I did when I was a child. They have friends, classmates, and teammates of different backgrounds, races, and religions. Those relationships will help shape their character so that they grow up as thoughtful, productive, and accepting adults. Unfortunately, we can't shelter our kids from everything. They also get exposed to antisemitism and hate speech, which has existed in our community since I walked the halls of these schools. There's a difference, though, between now and then. When I was a student, for the most part, that antisemitism hid under the surface. Today, due to the events of October 7th and the aftermath, the antisemitic individuals normally hiding among us have come out of hiding. In plain sight, this vocal minority is using the awful tragedy as an opportunity to spew hatred and vitriol in our community. It cannot be tolerated. The hateful and antisemitic post yesterday from a member of the Colonial School Board was shocking and incredibly hurtful to Jewish members of this community, the community that you've all been elected to serve. And while she is responsible for her own words, it reflects very poorly on this school board, a board that has historically done excellent work in this community. Her statement was intellectually dishonest, hateful, and frankly, un-American. Your colleagues' comments bring to the surface what Jews have always felt, that antisemitism is all around us, even those tasked with educating our children. Of course, Dr. Jamina Clay has stepped down from her position, running away from this discussion, to avoid taking public responsibility here tonight. It's much easier to resign and sneak away. But your Jewish neighbors can't just forget about her words and move on. We need to understand how someone with such extreme hate in her heart and such despicable views can get into a position of authority within our school district, influencing the way our children are educated. And we need to understand how you can ensure that someone like her never has such a position again.
Hi, my name is Rashida Randall. I live in Plymouth Township. I have two daughters, one who graduated from PW in 2018, who is now a Temple graduate, Goals, and a daughter who now is a PW 10th grader. Unfortunately, as Muslim Americans, my daughter who has graduated, and this is a conversation I've had with Dr. Christian in the past, has experienced marginalization, racism as people of color, and major Islamophobia in this community. During the Trump administration, during the Muslim ban, and often the word Muslim itself is conflated with the term terrorist. It's the first word most people think of when they hear terrorism, or terrorist is Muslim or Islam. So unfortunately, my children in this community, despite the appearance of openness, despite the appearance of diversity, have often been told that they have Arabic-sounding names. So around the time of 9/11, my oldest was sitting in a classroom where someone said, "Oh, her name sounds like Obama, so she must be related to Bin Laden," for example. Those types of things, which are very uncomfortable as a mother to hear. I am a parent in this school district. I am an educator. I've had students over the years who are of various faiths and ethnicities, not a problem. As a special education teacher, different disabilities and abilities as well, so diversity's not a problem for me. What I do have a problem with is, as a Muslim, and what stresses me out as a parent, is living in a community where people are so upset about words, which do affect them, but I'm not hearing people concerned about collective punishment, where every ten minutes, a Palestinian child is being bombed and blown to bits. No one is talking about it. It's complete silence. And yes, children are being held hostage, and yes, children are being imprisoned in Israeli prisons as well for years, and people have brought... And people have brought that up. But yes, the IDF has been accused of committing UN violations, and collective punishment is a Geneva's Convention violation. No one is bringing that up. So yes, Dr. Clay's words are hurtful for a lot of people in this community, and I understand that. But I also understand, as someone who's often painted as a terrorist just by simply being a Muslim, I get the fact, on the receiving end, that as someone who has sat with Palestinian children, and also as a therapist who has held the hands of parents who have experienced the IDF strip-searching them to the point where they have lost control of their bodily fluids, or the fact that IDF has marched through their homes without permission and treated them like non-humans, I understand both sides of the story. And what I would like to say is that collective punishment does nothing to solve the problem. It just makes, again, as a therapist, I can tell you, perpetuates a system of violence that will not end. So as a community, if we want to help each other out and support each other, we have to come together and recognize that, yes, words are important, but actions as well. And everybody in this community is hurting right now. Your Muslim brothers and sisters are hurting just as much as the Jewish brothers and sisters are. And we're not reaching out to each other. We're shutting each other down. We're blocking each other out, and our children are seeing this example, and it's hurting them. The best thing my daughter has seen recently as a 15-year-old is she saw that there was a group of Jewish people who went to New York and shut down Grand Central Station, shouting out that collective punishment and the killing of innocent life was not okay. That made her feel like her humanity was accepted and that it mattered as much as the Jewish child being held hostage. She needed to feel that and hear it. She hadn't heard it in school. She hadn't heard it in her community, but she saw it on a TikTok. That's not okay. And so I, as a parent, want to feel that, just as I tell my Jewish students, and sit with them, and nurture them as they're going through, you know, the hostage crisis, as they're going through feeling antisemitic, understand that. We went through that also, supporting them with the Ukrainian population. I want to also feel that my Muslim students and my Muslim children are feeling as supported and not being seen instantly as a terrorist, and that the two are conflated. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rabbi Rony Handler, and I live in Philadelphia. I'm the senior rabbi at Congregation Beth Tikvah Ben Adesha Ron in the neighboring Erdenheim neighborhood. And among our congregants, we count dozens of students and families in the Colonial School District. When I was 15, I traveled with a busload of teenagers to Poland and Israel, where we joined 5,000 Jewish teens from around the world. Together, we were witness to the atrocities of the Holocaust. We walked in and out of the bunkers at Auschwitz and Maidanek. We saw the walls that are still standing from the Warsaw Ghetto. And we were confronted over and over again with a question of how could this have possibly happened? How could it be that one man or one country could instigate and undergo the systematic extermination of an entire people while the world said nothing? The policies and decisions that led to the Holocaust and the Final Solution were not enacted overnight. Instead, it was through a slow chipping away of rights, of freedoms, and of dignity that set these destructive wheels into motion. And it was all those who agreed with these decisions, who supported them, and who were indifferent and silent, who let them happen. Yes, there were those who stood up against such laws and who risked their own safety to help their Jewish neighbors. And there were many more who did not. After the Holocaust, the repeated injunction for us as Jews has been, and we hope that this is true for everyone, has been never forget. Never forget what happened, never forget how it happened, and never let it happen again. All we desire for our children is for them to grow up in a world without all of the hate and antisemitism that we, that our parents, that our grandparents, and that our great-grandparents before us experience as children and as adults. Antisemitism has taken different forms for each of our generations. And each of us in the Jewish community has also experienced hate in different ways in our own individual lives. Some stories include physical or emotional trauma on horrific scales. Some include bullying, harassment, and gaslighting on the internet or in person. And other stories include those I've heard from current students and recent grads of Plymouth-White Marsh High School, which include microaggressions that have been swept under the rug by the adults and the people who are supposed to be keeping our kids safe. And none of this is okay. While my kids are not students in this district, my nephews are. And many of my congregants live in this district and send their children to district schools and have in the past and will in the future. I want all of them to grow up feeling safe at school. And I want them to also support their fellow classmates. I want them to learn that they should not participate in harmful behavior toward themselves or others, and that they must not allow hate in any form to spread or fester. I want them to learn how to engage in productive debate with their peers, knowing that we don't all need to agree, but we do need to make an effort to understand when speech or actions are hateful or hurtful to another person or to a group of people. And we must allow such moments not to go unchecked. We must learn how to engage one another with openness and a sense of curiosity so that we can learn with and from one another. And we must take care not to put out into the world, whether through face-to-face communication or through social media postings, sentiments that could even remotely be construed as hate speech. I pray that our students will learn this, and how much more so do I pray that our teachers and leaders model this behavior for our community. Since the Hamas terrorist attacks on October 7th and the ensuing war, antisemitic incidents in this country have skyrocketed. So while it might seem that being critical of Israel has nothing to do with Jews in general or Jews outside of the State of Israel, that just isn't the case. Jonathan Greenblatt, the chief executive of the Anti-Defamation League, explained just yesterday in a New York Times opinion piece by Charles Blow that "the vast majority of Jews", "for the vast majority of Jews, Zionism is fundamental to Judaism." While there are those who might be indifferent to Zionism, Greenblatt believes that claiming to be anti-Zionist but not antisemitic is like someone having said in 1963, "I'm against the Civil Rights Movement, but I'm also against racism."
Rabbi, respectfully, we have a five-minute limit. You can come back up after other people have spoken, but it has been five minutes.
Okay, I don't know if there's a limit. Can I just wrap it up and go?
Certainly, but we just want to give, out of respect, everybody waiting. We want to give everybody an opportunity.
Thank you.
Sure.
Taking in all the unfolding events over these last few weeks, I hope that we can, I know that a lot of us have felt really helpless. And sometimes in those cases, our words and our social media posts are where we turn. But we must also take care not to wield these tools like weapons. Indeed, it is the school district's responsibility to teach our students to engage on social media in ways that promote learning, connection, belonging, and safety, so that in fact, all of our students do feel that they have a place here and that they do belong. And I hope that the recent events that we've encountered here can help be an example of how not to engage online for ourselves and for our students, and that the district can really consider how all of its leadership can be trained to model true belonging, to model passionate and respectful disagreement with one another. And I would welcome the opportunity to sit down with others, to work together, to share with one another so that we can learn with and from one another to ensure that nothing like this happens again. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Wine. I live in White Marsh Township. I'm a lifelong member of this community, having attended White Marsh Elementary, Colonial Elementary and Middle Schools, and proudly graduating from Plymouth-White Marsh High School in 1999. My three children are students at Ridge Park Elementary, Colonial Elementary, and Colonial Middle School. I am also a school psychologist at Central Buck School District, so I'm having my fair share of interesting school board meetings this week. As a 7th-grade student at Colonial Middle School 30 years ago, I experienced a barrage of antisemitic harassment that lasted for a good portion of the school year. It started out with coins being thrown at me and some of my Jewish peers during class. It expanded to daily torments from a particular student who glorified Hitler and the Holocaust and made it clear to me that he felt I belonged with those who perished in the Holocaust, in the gas chambers in Europe. His comments were made openly and heard by other students and by teachers. I was 12 years old and going through my own personal struggles that year. I was vulnerable and had no power, which likely made me an easy target. When I tried to seek help, I was told by my teachers that there was really nothing they could do and that he was a student who had some problems. Looking back, I remember my teachers as caring educators, and I have to assume at the time they felt they had no power to take action against antisemitism in their classrooms. These experiences had a profound impact on me and on my well-being, and I still remember them well to this day. 30 years later, I sent my own children to our wonderful schools, knowing that the experiences I had would no longer be tolerated, that hateful comments or discrimination against any student would not be tolerated, and that action would be taken to ensure that students of any background, race, or religion would feel respected and safe in our schools. Elected board members are charged with making decisions that are in the best interest of our students and education system. The rhetoric that Dr. Clay posted on her social media page, full of misconceptions and falsities of the terrible situation in Israel and Gaza, only contributes to the rising antisemitism our families are facing. When a school board member, a person with a platform, feels emboldened to speak in this way, it starts us down a dangerous path, giving voice to community members who either believe the same misconceptions or want to benefit from them, to spread their own messages of hate. It is not a far fall before other administrators and teachers no longer feel they have their own power or the ability to speak up for students without a voice. I want to thank you in advance for accepting the resignation of Dr. Clay. And thank you for listening to us this evening.
My name is Jordan Bell. I live in Lafayette Hill. I have two children, both in the middle school. This morning, or this afternoon, when I received the email from the district explaining Dr. Clay's resignation, I immediately began to draft a response to Dr. Christian. I decided to save it and read it here this evening. But before I do, I just want to reference the portion of the email that caused me to want to respond to it. Dr. Clay's post was offensive to many, and as a school board member, this is unacceptable in a district that prides itself on cultivating a sense of belonging. And this is my email in return. "Dr. Christian, your message of inclusivity is an important one to share. However, I feel that by adding two seamlessly simple words to your email, you have painfully and blatantly left the door open for further divide. Saying that her post was offensive, quote, 'too many', shatters the hope of the local Jewish community that antisemitism is unequivocally unwelcome in your school district. The undertone of referring to the Israeli army as a terrorist organization is thinly veiled antisemitism. Replace antisemitism with racism, and I believe you will see more clearly that this is not an issue that welcomes both sides. By declaring her words offensive, quote, 'too many', your own undertones suggest an acceptance of those who believe otherwise. Jewish people everywhere are painfully relearning just how fleeting support is for their way of life. To see that support waver in the words of our school leadership, it's more than disheartening. It's fearful. I know that you did not ask to be pulled into this or to have this issue rise to the surface within your district, but it has. Your words carry a lot of weight in this community. Adding those two words, quote, 'too many', will embolden those who choose to read between the lines. I hope you see fit to follow up with a stronger and more supportive message."
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, the board. Dear members of the community, we are all hurting. I understand that. Emotions are high.
Could you please, sir, I'm sorry, could you please state your name and residence, please?
Oh, excuse me. My name is Yassin Bin Salm, and I live in Lafayette Hill. I have two children in the district. Sure. While some might have never visited the land, some of us are from that land. Some of us consider that that land theirs. Some of us don't have the right of return. I have seen and heard members of the community who I respect planning trips. I can't say the same thing. I'm aware of the strong connections, I said. Recognizing this, let us address this with sensitivity and openness. I heard a lot about learning from each other. We're not here to teach the other. I think, I hope, many of us are here to learn, and I am here to learn. I've been listening actively and closely to everything that's been said. At this intricate situation's core, we must remember our shared humanity first, not a propaganda that we have been taught or mindlessly taken aside just because of an emotional attachment. I am not accepting that for myself, and I hope our community does not engage in such a rhetoric. We all have desires. We want our families and communities to be safe. These universal desires unite us as human beings. Let us hold on to that common ground. Let's not look for what divides us. The ongoing conflict in the Middle East is challenging, complex, painful, causing suffering and hardship for everyone involved. And I have seen colleagues losing their jobs just because they felt sad about what's happening. I have seen colleagues losing their jobs because they expressed themselves, believing in our constitutional right of freedom of speech, rather than assigning blame. Let's approach this matter with curiosity, rationality, critical thinking. Does a life of a kid from Gaza mean less than a life of a kid from Israel? I urge you, please, to focus on empathy, not sympathy. "Oh, that's sad." No. Try for a minute. Sit down and imagine you are the mom looking at both your husband and your children with members not at sight, all of them dead. What would you think? Or if you are dead, think the same thing. Let's also not forget that there are innocent civilians on both sides. While militaries, militias, have their own agendas and goals, I wish we live in a world that there is no war, there is no conflict. But that's utopian. That doesn't exist. But for the civilians, I heard a lot about antisemitism, and that's wrong. I condemn it, and I do not accept it. But for a second, I invite anyone, or everyone, to please do research and look for the word "semitism". What does it mean? What are and who are the semi-nations? In the definition, you won't find IDF. IDF is a military. They defend a country, and they are killing people, whether you call it collateral damage or whatever, but they are people. Today, as recent statistics, we are at more than 12,000 human beings dead. And if we add the 1,200 people who died in Israel, that's too many for our humanity.
Sir, you're at five minutes, if you could...
Okay, I will. I urge you today to support humanitarian efforts, that aid needs to get to people who need it, and to please restrain from dividing our community. We live here. We're far away from the conflict. Yes, we have feelings, emotions. We want this to end as quickly as possible, but let's not divide our own community. In conclusion, I will leave you with this message of hope and unity. History teaches us a lot of lessons. We need to be good students. Figures like David Bungarian, Nensol Mandela, were once considered terrorists. They went on to win the Nobel Prize of Peace. This to say, names, semantics are important. Propaganda is there. Be careful. Martin Luther King said, "I have a dream." We all know that speech. We celebrate the speech, but we forgot about the dream.
Sir, I have other speakers waiting. It's been five minutes, more than five minutes.
Together, I think we have the power to contribute to a future where all people can coexist in peace and prosperity by coming together, listening, understanding. We can work towards a world where our shared humanity prevails and conflicts find a resolution through dialogue, not fights. Thank you for attention, and may we all strive for a better future. Thank you for listening.
I'm Rabbi Glenn Etman. I am the senior rabbi at congregation Oremi in Lafayette Hill. It is wonderful to see the support that is here. To be honest, I had something entirely differently prepared this morning. And I stand here both with the nerves of this moment and seeing everybody here and feeling elements of support, but also the nerves because you get nervous when you care. Couple weeks ago, a friend asked me, "What is it like being Jewish today?" And I simply responded, "Harder than it's ever been." In a recent book about antisemitism, there was a comment that antisemitism is such a broad category, such a broad way, as we just heard. It's difficult to define. But really, when we go down to it, it's Jew hatred, hatred to a specific community with tropes that have gone on for a long time. About five or six years ago on Rosh Hashanah, or New Year, I preached about antisemitism. And sadly, I feel all the words that I spoke then can be said and be relevant today. But today, we're here to be able to begin, I hope, to feel a strength, to call out hatred where it is. Sadly and unfortunately, each year, I hear from students about antisemitic moments, microaggressions, things that have occurred, similar things that I felt when I was growing up in my small town in Connecticut. And I welcome any conversation that needs to be had. And quite honestly and quite simply, thing that I learned last week, when my community was blessed to hear a commander in the Israel Navy, a magnificent young man who commands his own battleship, guy's probably not even 26 years old, pointed out something that is so unique and so important for us to understand. The Israel Defense Forces is the only military unit in the world with the title "defense". Their sole focus is to defend Israel, to defend Judaism, and to help keep the world safe in that realm and in that regard. I welcome conversations. I welcome the education. And the great Rabbi of the first century, Hillel, once said, in paraphrase, because the Hebrew is much more elegant than the English, but in paraphrase to say, "When people around you cease to act like human beings, it is our obligation to stand up and to be a good human and to strive to be a good person." Again, we're here. I welcome the education. I welcome the opportunity to dialogue, to feel the strength, to know and to understand, and to absolutely call out Jew hatred where it exists, when it exists, and how it exists, because it can't exist. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darren Sudman. I live in Plymouth Meeting. And to all the people in the auditorium, I just want you to know it's so much nicer in here. So I'm happy to be here tonight, actually, to celebrate Kathy and Sue. I want to thank you guys for your decades of service and for your love of our children. I'm sorry that Jamina's post cast a shadow over your final night, but nothing can cast a shadow over the contributions you've made to our community. So this incident will blow over. This incident will blow over, but the impact that you've had on our community will last for generations. Within 24 hours of posting a message on Facebook, Jamina resigned. So this matter is resolved now, right? Then why do I still feel unsettled? I strongly disagree with her characterization of the IDF as terrorists and her suggestion that the intention behind the current conflict is to eliminate the Palestinian people. I also disagree with her decision as an elected leader of our school board to post such a controversial statement on Facebook. There are more productive ways to express concern and outrage. I never met Jamina. I don't know where she grew up, who her friends are, or the kind of education she received, which is why I resisted the urge to judge her or to try to understand her intentions when she made the post. Is she antisemitic? Does she believe the state of Israel has a right to exist? Does she find connection between the Black experience here in the States and the Palestinian experience? And/or does she know people in Gaza who are afraid for their lives or worse, lost someone dear? Her words were hurtful, and her perspective was confusing. But my first instinct was to be curious, not punitive. I gain nothing. In fact, we all probably lose if we don't learn her answers to these questions, get the opportunity to share our perspectives with her, and see where we find common ground. I actually believe we had an obligation to take this approach because we're sitting in a school boardroom. This is where we decide how our children are taught and what they learn. I want my children to learn how to seek understanding before handing down a sentence. I want them to learn empathy, how to grapple with nuance, and how to hold multiple truths at the same time. I'm disappointed that we didn't get the opportunity to model that behavior for our kids here tonight. I feel like we missed an opportunity to learn. Anne Frank said, "In spite of everything, I still believe people are good at heart." This was my default after reading Jamina's post. I was going to give her the chance to prove me wrong. What was your default? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Fahad Yafeh. I live in Plymouth Meeting. I've been in this area for nearly 30 years. I have three children, one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one in Colonial Elementary. I have to start by saying I didn't wake up this morning thinking that this is what I was going to be doing this evening. My Apple Watch says my heart rate's 140, so I don't have a prepared statement, so please bear with me because this is a painful topic to talk about. This is, emotions are high, and I don't want to stand here and litigate a war that's overseas. I think maybe I should just share a little bit about my perspective and how it affects my children and their friends. I was, you know, I was born here, Arab-American, Muslim-American, went through, you know, the... I grew up in northeastern Pennsylvania, so, you know, the kind of understanding of that part of the world was a lot less when I was a kid. When I was a medical student, driving through White Marsh on my way to see a movie with my brother on the day after September 11th, we were stopped by the White Marsh Police Department, and the first question I was asked was, "What country are you from?", although I was from the United States. So there's a lot to unpack on many sides. I don't even say both sides because I think there's multiple sides, and there's multiple feelings, and there's multiple emotions. And, you know, there's so many things that I've agreed with that every other speaker has talked about when they talk about humanity and understanding each other's humanity and our shared humanity and learning from each other and never letting these things happen again. And I want to be able to create a space that my children, who are Muslim, who are partially of Arab descent, who are Americans, who are able to kind of express their self and have others recognize their humanity. I grew up pretty quiet. I didn't talk about these things. And when I did, the first thing that I had to do, and I know that there's many of my Jewish neighbors that will say the same exact thing, the first thing that I had to do was convince the other person that I was a human being, that I was a person, that I had value, that I had something important to say, that my life was important, that my experience was important. And rather than discussing the conflict and the parties to the conflict, I guess I'd just like to offer myself up as your neighbor, as your Muslim neighbor, as your Arab-American neighbor. If anyone wants to talk to me, if the school board wants my input, if they want, if anyone wants any way to also get more perspective. We're talking about, this is a wonderfully diverse area, and there's so much that this area has given to my family, to my children. Their experience in the school district and this community has been amazing. But there is a hurt. My children feel pain. My children have a hard time being able to express that pain of racism and Islamophobia from a perspective that oftentimes gets ignored as well. So it's not to, as we all are, I guess, kind of getting out our measuring sticks and measuring our grievances, I, you know, I just would like to say that, you know, your Muslim neighbors, your Arab-American neighbors are here too, and we'd like to also be able to help in that conversation without detracting anything from anyone else's conversation, without dehumanizing anyone, without belittling anybody's opinion or anyone's belief, or, most importantly, anybody's humanity. So I guess if I can do anything, rather than discussing the nature of the combatants in this war, I'd like to just be a voice to, for my kids, so that they're actually better than me, so they're not as quiet as I was, so they don't accept, you know, they don't accept racism, discrimination, and pain in anyone. So I thank you all for your time, and I think my heart rate's even higher now. But, you know, I think that there's a lot of opportunity for all of us to kind of find some way, some common humanity, as many of the speakers have discussed, so that, you know, we can enrich this community rather than tear it apart, which really, really scares me when, you know, I think about the possibility. So I thank you, and have a great evening, everyone.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Bach. I live in Lafayette Hill. I have two children in the district, one in high school and one in middle school. And I want to start off by saying, in addition to the full room, there is a half-full auditorium over down the end of the hall, watching on livestream. We've heard a lot about antisemitism tonight, and as the educational director of Oremi, I want to share what we've heard from our students currently attending Colonial Schools. Every year, we have students who share their experiences with antisemitism and hate towards Jews within the Colonial School District walls. Just last year, our students had the "Hail Hitler", saluted, directed at them. In recent years, they've had pennies thrown at them, so it's still happening. And this was all prior to October 7th. Children cannot be expected to form academically until a safe and caring environment has been established. As previously mentioned, you have data from student surveys regarding how students feel about safety in school. From what we are hearing from our students, it does not seem that the data is supporting progress in that area. Have you analyzed the data that the No Place for Hate programs are effective? If they are not effective, are there plans in place to alter or change what is being done to combat antisemitism, racism, and all forms of hate, as well as to support all students that feel unsafe and experience all forms of hate? It appears more work needs to be done in these areas, and it needs to be done now. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kim Williams, and I'm not going to be, I'm not going to stand up here too long. I'm not on Facebook, but I did hear a comment that was made, that was, was made by Janita. The only thing that I can say and what I don't like, I was in the other room, and I heard a lot of comments about her. And I'm trying to figure out, as far as the school district, we say we're going to move forward, but then we turn around if somebody makes a statement that to their dislike, we turn around and do the same thing that you're upset about them. We turn around and indulge that person. I don't like the things that they were saying about Janita because I know what she's still for. As a friend of mine, I know what she's still for. I know how she was in this community and how she tried to put things together and people together. And as a Black woman, I know, trust me, I know how you guys are feeling because our kids went through the same thing, and we still dealing with a lot of things. And my thing is, until you actually sit and have conversations, like the gentleman, two gentlemen before, was talking, then he said about sitting down, having conversations with each other instead of reading, which, because sometimes people can read things the wrong way, things that are written, trust me, things that are written, people can take the wrong way. So until we actually hear from her, from her voice, you got to pardon me. I'm not going to jump on sides right now because I know the kind of heart that she has. And until we come as a community to be able to have conversations, whether we like to hear what each other has to say. I personally, and I know a couple of people here, Ms. Marx, and a couple of people here, I have conversations. And it's the conversations that people don't like what I say, don't understand what I'm saying, or I don't, and some things that I don't like what they say, I don't like what they're saying, but we end up respecting each other. And it'd be some hard conversation, and I'm talking about, you know, race conversation. But I respect people more instead of that hide-and-seek thing, to talk about it, to get out in front of each other and talk about it. So this is another situation, what I'm saying. Until we hear from Janita's mouth and hear where she's coming from, and we can sit and talk to try to move forward, to try to make things better, or whatever you want to say, make things better in our community, I think we should wait until then, until that's her, until we hear her voice. Let her voice be heard first. I can't hear. See, here we go. Can't hear.
Ms. Williams, director, this is for comments to the board. This is for comments to the board, Ms. Williams.
She ain't making choice not to come. When you come, when you have some, when you have, I'm right here, I'm listening.
Ms. Williams, comments should be directed to the board. This is a time to address the board.
Go ahead.
You're making comments to the board.
Well, they were making comments that.
I'm informing the audience, too.
Okay, so, if you didn't hear what I said, I said, until I hear her voice, until I hear what she has to say, I have to hear where she was coming from. Just like I sat at the table to hear what someone used to have to say, when all this stuff was going on, with Black Lives Matter, I listened. I sat and I listened, whether I liked to hear what you had to say, whether I liked to hear people calling my people animals and niggers and all that, I said, I was, let's sit at the table, so we can move forward, so we can hear what each other has to say. I didn't hear from Geneva, I didn't hear from her. All I heard was people of non-color coming down on a woman that happens to be my friend. So of course, if something happened to Ms. Marks, I'm gonna stand up and stand up for her. And she's not Black. I'm saying she's my friend, and I'm trying to hear from her what she has to say. And until we sit at the table to hear what she has to say, and then we can move forward, and maybe something that you can tell her to make things better, or vice versa, whatever.
Excuse me. Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams.
Not a Black away from what.
Excuse me.
You're not getting what I'm saying.
It's time for, Ms. Williams, it's time for our next speaker.
It was written down on Facebook, I didn't read it. I said until.
Excuse me, Ms. Williams.
And what she has to say.
Ms. Williams.
You don't have to say anything, stand by us.
Ms. Williams, I would just like to clarify something that I think might help.
Go ahead.
Dr. Clay was part of this board. She absolutely.
I can't hear her.
Presented her resignation.
Can you tell me because I can hear what you're saying?
I'm sorry. Dr. Clay presented her resignation to the board and to Dr. Christian earlier today.
Okay.
And therefore, she chose not to be here this evening.
Okay.
So she did give us a written resignation to the board, because she wanted to make sure that her actions and her social media post that was out did not distract from the work of the board. So I hope that clarifies.
Well, that clarifies, but I know her as a person, she might have made things to calm down a little bit, and then to have a conversation. All I said was, as far as giving a chance, that we can hear from each side of what's going on. I don't know if I'm going to agree or disagree with her, I don't know. This is what I'm saying.
And Doc, and Dr. Clay absolutely has, is welcome to come to a board meeting and make a statement if she so chooses.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I get emotional when I, when things like this occur. My name is Mrs. X, and I am a resident of the township. I didn't come here for this. I came for information. Honestly, today, I come to the school board meetings for different district issues and concerns. But when I walked in here, it was more like a press conference. Every time I come in here, it's like two people sitting, so I knew it was something popping off once I walked in, right? But I cannot, and I will not, allow anyone to tear my Black African-American sister apart. I will not. I don't even know her. But when we listen to the term "American," what we're supposed to hear is melting pot, land of opportunity, progression, maybe diversity, right? However, on the flip side, when I hear "American," I hear in place of that diversion, instead of diversity, oppression instead of opportunity, and thievery instead of place identity. I mean, the land was stolen in the first place, and that's something nobody ever wants to take responsibility for, right? So therefore.
Excuse me. Please, the comments, she has her comments, she needs to address the board and the audience, please, let's show respect for everyone this evening. Thank you.
So when I hear terms like "un-American" being stated about this individual, I can speak for myself and possibly maybe some other Black women, other African-American or Black Americans, period. But let's take a look around. Does this look like diversity to you? I might be the only Black woman in here, besides the one that just was up here. I have, we have the Islamic woman that spoke, but what I mean is, when you look around, look, this is not diversity. Even the board has a limited amount of color. And I'm not saying that's by design or anything, but it's the truth, we can look and see. Truth is, my dad's side of the family are Jewish. You can look at me and tell that, though, right? My mom's side are part Islam and part Christian, as far as their religious preference. And I don't condone any hate speech, any volatile acts of any kind. And as I stand before you, I can tell you, both sides have gotten along all the 30 years of my living just fine. However, I don't know her again, but I do know her struggle. I know that her credentials that precede or suffixes her name is "doctor." And by her credentials, I can tell you that, in being a mother of five, I believe I read, that she probably pulled herself up from her bootstraps. Ask me how I know, because if I stand before you, I got three degrees, two masters, bachelors, and a law student. So for Black women, it's already hard. I'm not saying it's not hard for anybody else. From my dad's side, definitely hard. But it's funny, because our culture is always love, but often our people are misjudged, or even hated. Let's take this back to this America piece for a second. While no one can tell anyone how to feel, how to be offended, but what we were told was that all Americans need to forgive. I mean, it was only like 400 years ago, when Blacks built the backs of this, when the country was built on the backs of Black Americans, who weren't even considered American at the time. But yet, we were barely even given any type of recovery, not even reparations, because we're still waiting on that 40 acres in a mule. But yet, we're supposed to forgive. We say that we reside in an inclusive community, and even in a district, but as I look around again, we're pushing punitive measures and making comments, everybody can get heated, but the punitive measures doesn't speak love. I'm a very God-fearing individual, and God is love. So meanwhile, when I'm told that I need to forgive about the things that happened to me and my people, why is it that it's not hard for anyone else to forgive? I'm sure that Dr. Christian, I heard someone say while he was in here, to advocate for a more punitive solution towards him for this individual, but that's not more of a solution, that's more of a move of ego, and not really love. And again, God is love. So no hate should be tolerated or added to, that's just going to aggravate the situation. Don't you think that that individual is probably home herself, crying, hurting, even apologetic? And if you don't, then how American really are we, to stand in here? Because I thought we were told to forgive? I'm done. Thank you.
I'm Missy Sterling, and I can say I'm a very proud resident of the Colonial School District, and I want to look at every person sitting at this table, and thank you for volunteering your time. I know it's not easy, but I say on behalf of my family that we appreciate every. In the early 1940s, a brave man from New York enlisted in the United States Army. He left his wife and infant son and traveled outside of the United States for the first time in his life. During his time in combat, he earned two Purple Hearts. This brave man was one of thousands of troops who liberated the concentration camps. He saw firsthand the horror that occurred. He vowed during his lifetime that this atrocity on the human race would never happen again. He made his grandchildren promise to always be proud to be Jewish, and promised that this would never happen to any human ever again. This brave man was my grandfather, Leo Schwartz. I will continue to fight when I see wrong against humanity. How do we explain to our Jewish teachers and students that it is safe to be in a school environment where one of its school board members has so much hate? How do we know these teachers and students will be treated fairly if any issues have become before this board member? Ellie Wiesel, Holocaust survivor, wrote, "We must take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. Sometimes we must interfere. When human lives are endangered, when human dignity is in jeopardy, national borders and sensitivities become irrelevant. Wherever men and women are persecuted because of their race, religion, or political views, that place must at that moment become the center of the universe." The mission on our very website, the Colonial School District website, says, "For students to learn, grow, and serve in a school community that is welcoming for all." Dr. Christian and members of this school board, our community demands better, and more importantly, the children in our community deserve better. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm glad I'm here and not sitting where you are. You have tough, tough jobs, I feel for you, but I'm here to talk, I wasn't even planning to say anything, but I'm here to talk about my experience as a Jewish child, one of eight Jewish children growing up in an orphanage of a thousand children, that was supposed to be nonsecular, but was a school of, quote, "Christian values," unquote.
Could we have your name and, your name and township?
I'm sorry, name, Alan Shirovsky Township, Lafayette Hill.
Thank you.
So I grew up in a school where I was one of the few Jewish children, and I was the other. I was, I may as well have had three eyes and four legs and been a cyclops. People looked at me like they couldn't understand that I was even human. I was one of those kids who had pennies thrown at him when he was walking down the main road. I was threatened by a Hitler Youth, to be, I was pushed off, almost pushed off of a monkey bar three stories high. I had teachers tell me that I was committing a sin by not singing "Onward, Christian Soldiers." So I lived this, and I bring this up just to say, and by the way, what this taught me, fortunately, was empathy. At the time that I was at Girard College, it was a school for, quote, "Poor, white, male students." In other words, there were no African-American children. This was in Stephen Girard's will. And as one of the few Jewish kids who went to Girard College, I was one of the few children at Girard College who felt empathy for the Black children trying to get into Girard College. And what I want you to feel, what I want you to understand, is that you have a tremendous responsibility to look out for all kids who may feel marginalized, okay? Not just the Jewish kids, but the Black kids, the Muslim kids, everybody. These children have no agency in their lives. They feel like they're powerless, and you are their power. They may go home and talk to their, they may not even tell their parents what's happening in school. In fact, I will guess that they don't, because they may feel embarrassed, they may feel that their parents can't help. You need to recognize when kids are having trouble and do things to help them. I don't know if you have programs in place to take care of these issues. This is a whole new thing here. You need to have psychological training available for these kids, you need to have counseling, you need to look out for those kids who feel like they are the other, and nobody is taking them in. That's all I ask, I implore you.
Well, listening to speeches before me, my name's Ronnie Keen. I'm a resident of Concha Hawk and White Marsh Township. Listening to those who've spoken before me, I was a little disheartened to hear from the Black community, have two voices from the Black community, and kind of witnessed them stretching to make comparisons between minority groups. I wrote down a couple of talking points. I think that it's important for people of all races, all backgrounds, to acknowledge the trouble that is facing the Jewish community, the Israeli community, the Arab community, and show empathy as humans, but not stretch to draw comparisons. So I would just like to say how, I was a little disappointed with that. To the Jewish community, I think that we need to acknowledge that they have a little more say in how they feel about this conflict than other communities. Now, I know as well, there is violence in Gaza, and so the Arab community as well, the Palestinian community, does have credibility here, too. But if we come together as minority groups, we have to understand that those directly impacted have a little more credibility than those who are not directly impacted. And then I'd also like to just propose, thinking of the students here, student perspective, I've heard from many of my friends how they feel kind of trapped, like they can't really share out how they feel. I know my one friend, he's publishing an article in the Plymouth White Marsh High School newspaper, The Town Crier, about antisemitism and the history of Israel, and he's glad that he can speak out on that perspective. But organizations like the Anti-Defamation League need to provide outlets for Jewish students, Arab students, students from all walks of life, to discuss how they feel about the Israel-Hamas conflict. And I know people before me have spoken about how they were upset with certain wording, like the board members' words were offensive to many, and how the school board isn't or hasn't yet done enough to respond to what happened yesterday. And I think that giving students an opportunity to speak on what they believe, and speak on how they feel about the conflict, is a great first step. So if we could start implementing, especially in higher school levels, not necessarily the elementary school maybe, but Plymouth White Marsh High School, I know there are a lot of bright voices willing to speak about the conflict and how they feel about it. So those are just a couple of things I noted while hearing everyone else speak. Thank you.
Rodney, thank you for, Ronnie, thank you for standing up and sharing that, and we'll definitely make sure administrators reach out to discuss that with you and other groups. Thank you.
Struck me was that the children are watching, and that the adults have to really take a look inward at our biases, and really, and the school district to offer programs that examine biases between the adults and students, and examining curriculums and how biases are weaved through these curriculums. Because it's not just the messages that kids are receiving at home, but it's also all of the literature and the media. And our job as educators is to help guide them to make informed decisions, because what we're seeing on social media is a lot of uninformed and misinformation. And so I just want to say that, as a Jewish American, I'm hurt, but at the same time, my pain is no different than somebody else's pain. You know, it's not a competition. But we have a responsibility to teach and educate and give them the best information, so that way they can be informed, young people, and then serve in our community as adults. Thank you.
My name's Jamie Kaplan. I live in Lafayette Hill. I have a child in Colonial Middle School. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, I know it's been a long night. I just wanted to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns about what happened with the social media post. And I also just wanted to respond to the idea that there's not diversity in this room. Just because you can't necessarily see diversity, that doesn't mean that there isn't diversity. And I just want to thank my Christian friends that showed up tonight, my Christian friends that were here. that were here in this room, my Christian friends that were in the auditorium, and my Christian friends that I know were watching. And I'm sure there were other people that aren't Christian, that are other religions that were here, listening and supporting, and I just really appreciate that support. And I'm so proud of this community, and I'm very proud to be a Jewish American. Thank you.
My name is Susan Michaels. I'm a resident of Lafayette Hill. My children went through the Colonial School District, and they are now 36 and 33, so I don't have a child currently in the school district. And the only thing I wanted to say is that thank you for your time and listening to us, and that I hope, I don't know what the format is for once this meeting concludes, but what I'd like to walk away with tonight is to know what you heard and how you will communicate to those of us that were here or listened otherwise, and what your path is to go forward, to know that the children in the school district will learn from this experience, and what we as residents can walk away with, and what your next step is to deal with the hurt that all of us are feeling from every side. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Conan, and I'm a resident of Lafayette Hill. Last night, at 10:21 approximately, I received an email from Dr. Clay. Now, not everybody in this room knows that, but about 30 minutes prior to that, my wife crafted an email, my wife Jaclyn, who was watching on YouTube channel, crafted an email to the board. And for whatever reason, she couldn't get it to go through, so I sent it on her behalf with my email address. It was a response to what we had read in her social media post. Now, an hour before I received Dr. Clay's email, my wife and I were sitting there watching TV, and my phone was blowing up, because the executive committee at Congregation, many of whom are here tonight, started talking about the social post and what are we going to do about it. So, right away, my wife Jaclyn crafted that email and sent that out to you guys, many of whom are in the room tonight. I didn't put Dr. Clay on that email, but someone sent it to her, and she immediately responded to me, and she wanted to talk. And for that, I gave her a lot of credit. And we have been talking internally amongst ourselves, and Rabbi Glenn Edman, who is here tonight, and our president Mark Wolfheimer, who is also here, who spoke, both who spoke earlier, had decided that we wanted to invite her to our synagogue to speak with us. Not a big group, but we wanted to hear her. We wanted to educate her, and we wanted to find some common ground. And so, I want everyone to know that we're going to move forward with that. We are going to find time to meet with her and speak with her and understand her point of view. And as a follow-up, the rest of the congregation will hear what we spoke about, and I'd be happy to share that with the board and let you know. If Dr. Clay decides that she wants to speak at a future board meeting, I look forward to attending and listening to her point of view in front of everyone else. So, thank you for your time and your dedication to White Marsh Township.
I feel like I should talk about hybrid, or if we should open and all that stuff, but we've moved past that. Okay. Hi, I'm Karen Salkin, and I am a resident of Lafayette Hill. I sat here all night, and everyone pretty much said everything I was going to say, but I want to address the board. And Ronnie, you inspired me to get up. I want to thank you for breaking the silence. So many of us feel the silence, and we don't know where to turn. You know, the posts are posts and social media is seen by so many, but tonight felt so good. It felt so good to be able to get up here and say something and have people listen to us. It felt good to hear other perspectives. My dream for the high school, and I have mentioned this to Dr. Bakani, is when things happen, bring them together. It's kind of like what you said, Ronnie. There was something that happened with a bake sale. There was a bake sale, the UNICEF group had a bake sale, and there was something that it said, "It's going to the children of Palestine." Now, I could tell you, as a Jewish director of a school and as a mom and a proud Jew in America, the UNICEF kids are not bad kids. You joined a UNICEF committee. You're a pretty good kid. They weren't informed, and all I wanted from that was the UNICEF group who made that bake sale to get together with the Jewish group and just understand why that felt bad. They probably didn't even know. They were just told to take it down. It's the education. It's our voices. And this is the first time since October 7th that I felt like weak talk. And I thank you, because you know what? Things have been done. So, I thank you, board, for listening to us. We're not easy, and I say that as a Jewish American, but no one's easy. And I will tell you that it felt so good tonight to break the silence. So, let's keep the talks going. Let's keep the kids and their discussions going. And I just ask that maybe for the teachers, just share how the Jews are not okay. We're not, we're scared. I have friends who are putting up Christmas lights this year who are Jewish, because they're afraid to put up a Hanukkah menorah, thinking that someone's going to come to their house and hurt them. So, with that little example, I just want you to know, we're not okay. And everyone keeps saying it's okay to not be okay. And knowing that, I just ask that you tell the teachers, "We're not okay, this staff," so they can just be a little more alert. And I thank you again for letting us break the silence. Thank you.
Are there any of my colleagues' board comments this evening? I do have something I would like to say, but you want to go first.
Thank you to everyone who spoke. I speak for myself, and I know my fellow board members. We heard every single word. I do want to specifically give a shout out to my fellow board member, Chris Epstein, who actually had surgery yesterday on her leg. She was not going to be at this board meeting. She was supposed to be home, taking care of herself, and she said in executive session, she's like, "I want to hear our community. I want to hear what they have to say. They are hurting, and I want to hear them." This is an example of an amazing school board member. This is an example of someone who wants to do good for their community, and that is what all of us are here to do. Jamie, thank you. Dr. Clay has done tremendous work for our school board. She has been, she, you know, she's no longer with the board, of course, but she has also done work and dedicated herself to the school district. So, yes, she said some things, very harmful, awful things, that hurt a lot of people. But please understand that she is and has been a school board member and someone who does care about our community, and the fact that she reached out to the gentleman back there and is willing to come in and talk and learn just proves that point, right? So, let us try to forgive, knowing that when people do those hurtful things, if they're trying to make amends, if it's coming from a place of mistaken facts, mistaken thoughts. So, that's really all I wanted to say, is thank you for all of your time. I learned from tonight, and I hope everybody learned from each other. And I know that our administration is listening to everything as well. I love when our students speak so eloquently and share, I mean, how amazing our students are. So, thank you to you for speaking up. And I know that our administration will do what we can. We will continue to do what we have been doing to try to make people feel better. But thank you all for your comments.
So, I just also want to thank you all for being here, for being brave and being courageous and for sharing your stories, because I know that there were a lot of personal stories that were shared, and it must have been very hard to share those as well. I think the words that resonate with me the most from tonight was just this shared humanity, the shared humanity that I think if we were going to try to define, I don't know if we could quite yet, but I think that there is a lot of space and a lot of room for us to collaborate, to create space, to listen, to learn, and to begin to understand where we are and what that really means. And so, I'm inspired in a lot of ways, by the way, that this group has come together and our community has come together, and I recognize that our community is hurting tremendously. And so, I think I just want to leave it with, I would love to see us, not just for our students, but for our community possibly create some pathways for space, for healing, for listening, and for opportunities to come together. So, thank you, thank you all.
I just want to say thank you for coming out and pouring your hearts out to us. I just really appreciate being part of this community, and we all are hurting. So, but thank you for coming out to speak, and it was respectful, and I really appreciate that part of it, because we know there are other board meetings and other areas that just are not like this. So, I do appreciate you guys coming out.
Yes, from the chair, I know I've been on the board the least amount of time, but I think we started tonight, planning to recognize Kathy and Sue for their commitment to the board, and really, all of you as well, it's the testament to the power of showing up and telling your story and advocating, and Sue and Kathy did that as board members, but the community is invited to every meeting. The board business meetings, the Thursday ones, are generally just a lot of motion, approved motion. The Monday meetings, the Wednesday meetings, the EIB meetings, they're all advertised and open to the public, and the more that you're there, the more helpful it is, the more, like, I'm not in any marginalized groups, like, I don't understand your perspectives, but hearing all the different ones tonight is just helpful. I know the district, that's, we go to these meetings, and they're like, "We have these initiatives, we have these plans," but it takes years to soften hearts and give people experience, give people perspective. So, the more that you can come, and the more that you're sharing, and the more you're investing in your kids, the more that's going to translate and percolate up and how it's going to just impact the community. So, I appreciate everyone that came out. I appreciate Kathy, and I appreciate Sue for all the time they put in and all the dedication they put in as well.
Thank you. Good evening. I share the same sentiment, and thank you all for attending and sharing your stories and having the courage and bravery to stand up and talk to us and with us. There's a phrase that says, "Hurt people, hurt people." I don't like the phrase, because I believe that hurt people should help people. And so, my, I guess, challenge and ask for the community, being a parent as well, remember our children. Remember that all of our children are in a hurting state as a result of many things that are happening in our community, and so, we have to be willing to help and not hurt other people, because that doesn't solve any problem, it doesn't provide solutions, and it definitely does not help our children. And so, that's what I stand for. I'm so excited to hear a lot of the comments around the just humanity concept and the piece of that, and the many people who are willing to help and willing to have the conversation. With the opportunity of being able to speak with Jamina, I know that she's willing to have the dialogue. I know that Jamina is a good person, and so, sometimes people make mistakes. We all do. None of us are perfect. And so, we ought to give people grace and allow her the opportunity to speak when she's ready to speak. Again, she may be hurting as well as a result, and so, just giving her the grace and the time to be able to deal with that and cope with that, and allow her to speak when she's ready, if and when she's ready. Thank you.
I too want to thank all of our speakers tonight, all the folks that have emailed me and I've spoken to on the phone, and thank the board for their service. I think we have, the district has many well-established partnerships, specifically with the ADL, and I certainly understand the magnitude of what has taken place and how we need to continue to improve. We need to be student-centered. We need to make sure that our students feel safe and cared for. When our administrators and each of our buildings develop their goals each year, they must have a safe and caring goal as part of one of their goals. Student achievement is obviously what we're about, but before students can achieve, they have to feel safe and cared for. I've spoken to a few of the religious leaders in the community, not only today, but in the past 36 hours, and I welcome the opportunity to put together a group so that we can improve and that we can hear what is being shared in each of the congregations. And I spoke to two rabbis today, and I've had a few meetings this past summer, talking about those things, how we can improve to make sure kids feel safe and cared for. Last night, as your phones were all blowing up, obviously mine was too, and then I spoke with Dr. Clay this morning, and then with the rest of our school board members, except for Sue Moore, who was obviously not available for comment. The intent was to help Dr. Clay understand the magnitude of that post, and I did express to her that it was offensive, and I had no intent to marginalize or minimize the importance of it. I think it is an imperfect approach, and we are certainly student-centered, and I have been student-centered in my career and will continue to be, and will work to continue to build the trust between the district and our families, because it is a collective community, and our schools here are the town, and I know that, having been here for several years now and being a lifelong Montgomery County resident. We have established affinity groups with our students, and we can improve them, cast a wider net to include more students. So, we certainly need to hear from our kids. But I spoke with Rabbi Edman today, and I spoke to several other leaders, and I look forward to getting everybody together to talk about how we can continue to give families a voice and make students ensure that they feel safe. Thank you.
And I just want to take these last few moments to obviously reiterate what my fellow board members have said, but also, thank you for showing up. Thank you for speaking up. Thank you for setting an example for our students. And I applaud Dr. Christian and his team. I know they are committed to do the work that needs to be done, so that every single solitary student in our district knows that they belong here. And I know Dr. Christian and his team are the ones to lead us in that direction, along with my fellow board members. So, thank you for coming this evening. Please know, we are, we are members of your community. Reach out to us when you need us, please. Thank you. Thank you.